One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alt, Mr. Beistel, Mr. Calero.
Here.
Mr. Frye.
Here.
Mrs. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mrs. Shipley.
Here.
Mr. Benz.
Here. Let the record show that eight present citizens comment.
Ah, yes, Lisa Ball. Could you come over to the podium, please, where there's a microphone?
There's another parent that would like to have an opportunity to speak. She just got here. She's filling out her form if she can turn that in as well.
That's fine.
Well, we're here basically because I am a parent at Southmoreland Primary. I have five-year-old twins that are entering into kindergarten. As a single parent, I need to be able to be the financial proprietor for my family. So, I have to work. And I need a facility that's going to be able to care for my son with his special needs that he has. For him, he has some sensory issues. He needs to have stability. He needs to have a regular routine. He needs a lot of familiar people in his life. We've been with FROCK Childcare for about three years now. They have done wonders for him. They actually have pushed me into realizing that he does have special needs because I was a parent who was in denial and I didn't want to accept it. So, we were told from the school board that we could purchase a school bus ourselves. It would cost us $20,880 for the school year for 10 families to split to have transportation to and from FROCK Childcare for our children. That for me would be double what everybody else would pay because I have two children. As a single parent, first of all, that's an incapability for me. I cannot afford that expense. I really need to be able to know that my children are well taken care of and I'm asking the school to go half a mile. Half a mile to pick my children up in a safe environment with people they're familiar with, with people that understand my son's special needs and are capable of providing the care that he requires. I've talked to numerous people and I've taken numerous avenues. I've contacted local businesses to see if anybody would be willing to help and donate, whether it would be to donate a vehicle, donate financially, donate time. I'm still in the process of doing that. Like I said, I've contacted many people. I'm taking every avenue I can take. I've also created a GoFundMe page to try to help with any type of funding that we could do, whether we could get assistance to help us pay if that's a requirement for us. I've talked to senators. I've talked to just people in the community that go to FROCK Childcare as well, that have the same concerns and the same wishes that I have, that our children are taken care of in the same respect. And we're basically asking the school board to say a half a mile is not out of reach to help these families who financially cannot do it. It would cost me personally $500 a month. That's my rent. We wouldn't have a home. Right now, we're living with family and I'm trying to find a home. I have a couple of applications out in Scottsdale of beautiful houses that we'd really like to move into. I'm praying that I get them. We wouldn't be able to move. We wouldn't be able to have our own house. We wouldn't be able to have my car because all of my money would be going out for expense for transportation for school, something that they should be just granted. I don't have the capability of having a lot of family members to help us out to care for my children. This week during orientation, I've actually taken a day off work. My mother has taken a day off work. We've rearranged to where I could watch them get on the bus on Wednesday for their first day. My mother had to get them off the bus on their first day. So, it's an extreme amount upon me as the parent who knows how financially I have to be responsible. So, that's why I'm asking for the school board to say, "Okay, let's do this for these 10 families." Unfortunately, there were supposed to be more representatives here tonight. I don't know if they got lost or what happened, but I mean, there were supposed to be more people here to talk to you and I know I've been in contact with the principal. I've had multiple people in contact with the principal and with the transportation board and just trying to see whatever we can do to try to get help. I've also spoke with, sorry, give me one second, with Debbie Leggins and she told me to make sure that I referenced the PA Code 22, which basically states that the school should be able to provide transportation up to 10 miles outside of the district. I'm asking for a half a mile. Half a mile. A grand total of two miles a day. So, that is my request upon you. I'm asking you to help a family who needs the help. I need to know that I'm going to have my job. Also, I just want to kind of put out there that in the winter, this is southwestern Pennsylvania, we've extended school years because we have to cancel because of snow days, because of really cold days, you can't have the kids outside. What am I going to do when we have a day or a week that we cancel three days out of that week? I can't call off for three days. I will lose my job. FROCK Childcare would be there for me. If the school is canceled and I've already dropped my children off, they keep my child all day until my workday is done and that child can be picked up. The reason I also specifically say FROCK Childcare, again, we've been there three years and they really know my son's issues. They know what he needs. They know how to handle him. Other daycares would not have kept my son. He has destroyed rooms. He has issues to where he has aggression and he has literally destroyed the room, flipped over playsets, threw chairs across the room. They know how to help with controlling him. We also have a TSS that he gets services with. She's been there with him at FROCK Childcare. She has done wonders with him. He has improved dramatically. But there are still those concerns that I have and I want to make sure that the people that he's with know how to care for him and care for him properly and in addition to that, love him. Charlene FROCK has done a lot for my family.
Excuse me, I have 30 seconds left.
Thank you. Special things that they've done for him, for example, if he has a good week in his period of progression, she's went out and purchased products for him such as a bookbag or a special toy, something to present to him to say, "Congratulations, Caleb. We are very proud of you." That is why I'm requesting FROCK Childcare as my daycare center and that's why I'm asking you to please give us an opportunity to make sure that our children are well cared for. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can I ask a question because I, this is the first we've heard about this, so it wasn't, didn't come in from the school board. You need to understand that. But secondly, tell me, you're, I'm not sure what you're asking. Your child is in a daycare center which is not, I don't know where.
It's not in the school district. It's a half a mile outside of the school district.
And he, like, you, what, I just, I just for my information. So, he's there like in the morning and then they need to be picked up and.
Correct. Right now, he is there in all daycare.
Okay.
And then when school starts on the 31st, what I'm asking is to be able to drop him off at the daycare so I can go to work and have the school bus pick him up there and drop him off there and then I can pick him up after work again. Otherwise, I'm going to have to figure out ways to make sure he's taken care of and it's going to affect my job.
Okay. Because like I said, to my knowledge, we've never heard anything about this. So, I just need a little bit more clarification as to what you're asking.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there another comment card?
Hi. I wasn't really prepared to speak, so I'm not real sure.
This is Shannon Rolls, right?
Yes. Yes, sir. My request is not near as compelling as Ms. Ball's, however, I have a seven-year-old, a four-year-old, and a three-year-old and we do live in the borough of Scottsdale. We have chosen FROCK Childcare as our provider as well. My children have been there for six years. My kids have grown up to love them and they are all family. I did consider another childcare service provider that is local, however, I'm just not comfortable with that location. And we are also in a similar situation where my husband works full-time. I'm a full-time student and the only, and we do not have family anywhere near. I'm from Oklahoma and my husband's family is two and a half hours away, so we do not have anybody that we can rely on. Previous years, I've not been in school and I worked 3 to 11 and so I was able to take my son to school or, you know, meet him at the bus stop and whatever, but right now we can't because I am in school full-time now. And my husband's starting a new job where he cannot pick them up or drop them off at school. So, right now, we have one child that will need bus services, but next year it'll be two and the year after that it'll be three kids that will need picked up. And that's three kids that we're putting in childcare. It's very important and we love FROCK, is what I'm getting at, is in that it's very important for them to be picked up there. We don't have anybody else to rely on and honestly, there's no one else besides Char that I trust with my kids, especially we don't have family or friends nearby. So, that's one thing that, and I know by speaking with other parents that do go there that that's why we want this, is because we don't want to leave FROCK Childcare. We trust them with our kids and they do consider us family as we do consider them. And we know that another childcare service that is just two blocks away from her location in Mount Pleasant, they do have bus pickup there from that childcare service over to Southmoreland Schools. It's only a couple of blocks away and that's all we were asking is if the bus can just swing around the corner and pick up our kids too and help out the families that way. I think that's all.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. And I do have a cold, so I apologize.
Thank you. Minutes? You will be asked to approve the minutes of the July meetings at the August 20 meeting?
Questions on those?
I think there's one more set that needs to come out, right? Being your Tuesday pack.
Hearing none. Finance, finance reports?
You'll also be asked to approve the financial reports on August 20, monthly reports.
Questions? Seeing none. Authorization of payment?
Yeah. We have a situation at the sewage plant. When Mr. Mizwa was hired and prior to Mr. Mizwa being hired, we did not have a licensed sewage plant operator on staff. We had an outside company running the sewage plant with that, their, those licenses and they were the individuals who were responsible for making sure that the plant was in good operating order, collecting samples, sending those samples to the Department of Environmental Resources and so on and so forth. And we had no problems with the things that they were sending in. When Mr. Mizwa got his license and he started to send in the samples, he immediately learned that the samples that he was sending in were very high in items that shouldn't be there, effluence, coliform bacteria, suspended solids that were being discharged into the stream that goes behind the stadium. So, he began to look into this and he found a number of rather alarming things. And Lee, I'm going to ask you to help me out here with some of the things that you found. Among them, there's an ultraviolet light, which is, what, about eight feet long? That was completely non-functional. There were pumps that were not functioning properly. Lee, well, what else did you locate?
Most of the aerators were clogged. We had to take all those off and clean them. The UV light wasn't functional. I purchased a new UV light and I have a spare. We quickly changed that and cleaned the case that it's in. We replaced the two main pumps because they would clog and our equalizing tanks would overflow. Now, we've been running real smooth since this past December. All the, all the reports have come back very good.
And so, what happened for about the first year or so that Lee was running the plant? We were in a situation where we were, he was, you know, trying to get these problems resolved, but the water that was going into the stream.
Right.
Was not meeting regulations until such time as he had gotten all these problems addressed. So, since December of 2014, here we are August, so that's nine months. Every sample that has gone in has been perfectly clean and fine. However, the samples that went in during the time that those problems were being addressed were not so fine. So, we received a letter a couple of weeks ago and we were assessed a $3,000 fine and that was in lieu of going to civil court. They were willing to accept $3,000 as a civil penalty. I talked to Lee about it. He called the Department of Environmental Resources and said, "Hey, you know, we have problems. We discovered we had problems when I, when he took over." And you know that we've been trying to address these problems because we've been working hand in glove with you, DEP, and, you know, so what's up here? So, they said, "Yeah, we agree that all that's true." So, they did reduce the fine or the settlement to $2,200. Interestingly, the samples, as I understand, have to be collected out of the stream right below the.
Yes.
Below the.
At the outfall.
Yeah, the outfall, right?
Yes.
And what were the conditions to get to those collection?
It was completely overgrown when I took over. We actually used a chainsaw and trimmers to get a path down through there. Right now, we just have a temporary path with a rope down through the stream, but we're able to go down. We have certain footholds to get down and we plan on building a set of steps. But we also had the local DEP agent come out, interview me, look over my lab. I do have a lab set up in the maintenance building. And we went over the complete operation of the plant and he was satisfied, very satisfied. And then he, I contacted him after receiving the letter and he explained the procedure to me. That's why I contacted the gentleman that sent the letter. And I also contacted Chester Engineering. That's the company that we hired to help us get our plant running straight. And I talked to one of their lead engineers out there. He, I in fact talked to him again this week and he said, "All of my numbers are really good." He said, "Just be careful in September when school starts back, our flow is going to go up from, say, 1,200 gallons a day to maybe 14,000 gallons a day." But we went through that last year and we were able to overcome that, but we have a lot of issues coming up that I have to be aware of. And we're set up to, we have the chemicals to add and everything's running clean. We cleaned out the main lines the other day.
So, I guess the point is it's kind of a mystery to us how everything was fine until the month Lee took over and then there was no longer a path to even get down to collect samples. We don't understand quite how that might have occurred.
I interviewed the gentleman that did, was doing the testing and the only way I could contact him, I withheld his check.
Right.
And he did come in to meet me and he wouldn't go over the procedure and he actually sent a letter, I think, to the business office. And I told him I was about to get my license and I was going to take over the operation of the plant, but he would not review any of his operations with me, what he did.
So, we did withhold payment for quite some time.
Right.
And unfortunately, got nowhere there. So, the point is, when Lee took over, there were a plethora of issues at the plant. He's gotten them straightened out, but we're still being fined for the issues that were not quite correct from the time he took it over until the time he got it repaired. So, we will ask the board to adopt a resolution next week to pay the civil settlement of $2,200 and then we'll just have that. Going forward, we will continue to do what we need to do to have the proper discharges going out.
My monthly reporting reports and discharge monitoring reports, they're sent in every month. In fact, I just gave the one for this, for July to Laura. They're all on file in my office and they show if there's any excursions from the permit and I have to actually send the form in if there's an issue. But if there's not an issue, I don't send that one form. I have all my records, all in neat notebooks, right on my separate desk.
Questions on that or comments? Yes, sir.
Before we actually took over, it was a private contract that we had with somebody?
Yes, it was.
And there are no recourse to go back and look at what he submitted for?
I did track down some of his reports and I had them sent to me from the lab and they're spot on. They're.
The DPD reported that there was no problem?
The sample he submitted did not have a problem.
How often do you have to submit samples?
I do three samples, three separate types, twice a month. Then I take pH readings anywhere from four to six times a month and I do dissolved oxygen readings four to six times a month. I have meters. We purchased meters. And in fact, the pH meter I just had replaced under warranty because I went to use it last week and it wouldn't read. So, immediately ordered my new one and it came in under warranty. So, I'll send out samples. I sent a set out this morning and I sent a set out last Thursday. It takes about two, a little over two weeks to get those back. This month, I'm going to send out three sets because we've had some clogging issues that I've discussed about these different areas in the plant. So, an engineer, Chester Engineering, suggested I send out for three samples this month and if I would have an infraction, the third sample would bring my average down. It's a complicated process and you have to be aware of your samples when you take them. It's not, if you hold up the sample, you really can't tell if it's going to pass. You have to just know the plant and we know how it's running and you know you passed the last three, four, five, six months. You have a pretty good feel if it's going to pass.
Does Chester Engineering check any of that? Do they do any checks on you to make sure that samples are okay?
No. We hired Chester Engineering when we first lined out the plant.
When you first did?
Yes. But I'm on the Board of Municipal Authority in Monongahela and Chester Engineering is the engineering firm. And just as a professional courtesy, I can call them and talk to one of their lead engineers. And he's, he's, I, the Vice President comes to our meeting every month at the Municipal Authority. So, I'll ask him questions and I'll sometimes call a plant or I'll talk to another plant in Western PA and just talk to them about their samples.
Is the cooling issue you had in the past lot, is it all taken care of and everything? And what was the problem? The cooling issue you just brought up, you had a problem with that? And it's ready to go and everything's ready for school?
Well, everything's ready for school, but what we're going to do this year is we're going to add a screen. Most plants have a grinder pump ahead of everything. If anything comes into the plant, it would grind it up. Now, we don't have that in our plant, so what we're going to do is install a screen on a hoist and we can lower the screen down in there and the, as the material comes into the plant and we can actually, we're going to crank it up and empty that out and that would be perfectly fine for our size plant.
Now, how, how often do you have to check this screen? I mean, you know how many gallons are going through there every day? You'd have to have some kind of form?
Well, it's, it's, no, it's the material that people put in there that shouldn't go in. Plastic material.
Butch, a lot of the problem is Clorox wipes. Things that don't dissolve in water and then when they get to the pump, you know.
I'm putting a notice out in the schools because I just found a good article. It does not only just affect our plant, but it'll affect huge municipalities. They'll get large blockages from the wipes because they will not dissolve. A large plant that has a grinder pump could grind that up, but most facilities our size do not grind.
Just $2,200 we have to pay? That'll take care of everything? Is it ready to go and school begins?
Oh, yeah, we'll be ready to go regardless.
I know. We'll clear our hopes.
Yeah, if we don't pay this, then we're going to have to go to civil court, yeah.
The money that we withheld from the previous company, how much did that come to? Does that come too close to the $2,200?
Well, I think, Mr. Marnell, we ended up finally paying the other company. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, then, as Bob was starting to say, couldn't we go back towards them to get any of this money?
Well, I don't think we have a way to prove that their samples were clean. And we don't, and we don't have a way, we don't have a way to prove.
Well, how'd they get their samples if they couldn't even get down to the?
I have many theories on that, sir.
Well, I'm just saying, so, let me have you prove.
Regarding that company, have they had any other issues with anybody else where they, again, if this was a, if this was a practice of this particular.
It was a private individual project.
So, said so. Again, there may have been other, other employees, employers that he had that he had the same issue with, we just don't know about them.
Possibly.
I did do some checking, some background checking. I was satisfied that we took over the plant when we did. We were able to get it online and with the help of the other maintenance men. Now, when we go out, the other maintenance men are not permitted to turn valves or make any process controls, but if I have to pull a pump or pull a line out or pull out the aerators and clean them, they can do that. They can do many things out there, but they are not permitted to actually change the process. DEP gentleman that was here that day with me, I was turning a set of valves and he was on the opposite side. He, he told me he's not permitted to turn that valve. So, I have walked around the tank to turn a valve because we were testing a couple lines, which is fine because it's, it's a learning process for me too. But I do have an entire municipality of Monongahela I can call and I do check if I'm in trouble with my DO meter, I'll call him and ask him or I'll call another plant or I'll call DEP or Chester Engineering.
Other questions? Thanks, Lee.
You're welcome.
Just, go ahead.
Discussion, old business? Don't see any, no one has old business? New business, RFQ for proposal?
Yeah, we have received two responses to the request for qualifications for the guaranteed energy savings initiative that we're hoping to start. Mr. Price just happened to pop in tonight and decided to stay for our meeting, but I'd ask Mr. Benz to perhaps name a small subcommittee of board members and I'll maybe have myself, Mr. Marnell, Mr. Mizwa and another administrator involved as well so that we can evaluate those two requests for qualification and make a recommendation to the board as to which company we might want to use if we, in the event we decide to pursue this project.
And I have a committee of myself, Mr. Polakowski and Mr. Calero.
Very well. I will be in touch with you gentlemen shortly then to get a meeting scheduled. It's Mike, Ball and Jason. Thank you.
St. Vincent College Prevention?
Yeah, every year we're asked to contribute to the St. Vincent College Prevention Projects. They receive a good deal of money at the county and state level and they ask for a small contribution from the school districts. This is the Drug and Alcohol and Bullying Prevention Program that goes on here at the school. It's been going on for many, many, many years. They do a fine job and I would recommend that we continue to contribute to that so that we can have our Drug and Bullying Program at the elementary level. I believe it's called Be Kind. They get more, more into the drug aspect of it as we move through the secondary levels. And St. Vincent also provides us with a crisis counselor that we use pretty heavily as well for students who have, who are severely at risk. So, we'd recommend that we continue to support that.
Questions on that? Seeing none?
Just two other items. The solicitor has passed out a resolution that we will ask you to consider next week. That would be for the solicitor to attend the school law workshop that runs in conjunction with the PSBA conference. So, you can take a look at his resolution there. It's a $299 registration fee, room at $182 plus tax and usual and customary meal and transportation expenses. So, you'll be asked to consider that. And then the other thing I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about, the Center Bethel Church of God has. Bethel Church of God has reached out to us on a number of occasions to partner with us, and they have done many things for the school. They supply extra clothing for what we call our Nurses Boutique for when students need a clean shirt or clean pair of slacks or any number of other things. Center Bethel Church has taken that over, and it looks like, looks like Macy's in there sometimes. They do a really nice job of stocking it. Another thing they do is they run a backpack program. I think I've told you about that, where they send, was it about 45 or 50 backpacks a week? Is that the number correct?
Last year was 50 backpacks. This year, they donated 85.
Eight, and this is the food backpacks I'm talking?
No, all the food?
Yeah.
There was, let me see, the total probably 30.
Yeah, so about, about every week, they're bringing 35 backpacks full of food to schools so that our kids who might be hungry on weekends aren't hungry. And the other thing they've done for the last several years is they've purchased and stuffed backpacks with school supplies for kids who are coming into the primary center who may not be able to, to, you know, afford a backpack or school supplies. And this year, there were 55, you said?
85.
85.
They started out...
I just have a picture here that I'll pass around, but this is Pastor Fine and a couple of the selters with backpacks they purchased and stocked. This church is really a good partner to the Southmoreland School District, and I'd just like to recognize what they do for our kids. They have dinners for the football team, dinners for the band. They just do all kinds of things to, to support our kids in what we're trying to accomplish here, so just big thanks to them. That's all I have for public consumption, sir.
Any board members with anything? Citizens comments?
There's a ham back there, yes.
Hi, I'm Cindy from Assistant Director of FROC Child Care, and I'm just coming to speak on behalf of some of the families that were trying to request the school bus for, to pick up the few children that we have. A lot of them have been there since birth, and some have special needs, and it would be disrupting to pull them out, which many families have had to due to the busing. You know, they're on the borderline of Mount Pleasant and Scottsdale, and, you know, we're right there, so I just thought, if you'd think about it, and for the families' behalf. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on the board? Need a motion to adjourn to executive session for personnel and two tax appeal items? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second by Mr. Beistel. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes 8-0 with one absent.